Do you please join me in a moment of silent prayer or reflection? Thank you. Go ahead, do your call please, Martha Joe.
Pat Rooney. Alan Ward.
Here.
John Gaston.
Here.
Kathy Cox.
Here.
Nicole Cohen. Here. Please join me in the pledge.
My pledge was to the justice to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to review and accept the agenda, please?
So moved. Speaking.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Gaston?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
I will go ahead and turn it over to Mrs. Sayer. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. We have our agenda for the 20th of June. I'd like to start with the consent agenda. Item four point one is the minutes for the regular session of May ninth, the special session that was held on May 24th, and our work session of May 1st. Is there a board having any questions or corrections in the minutes? Item four point one two is the approval of the agenda. Item four point one three is the personnel report. Wanted to let the board know that there are, there is a change. There was an omission of the job description. You were provided that this afternoon. That was added to the agenda for the technology supervisor position. That was, um... And I also understand there are a couple of questions about items on the personnel agenda, which we will address from the other executive session. My recommendation would be that when we actually do the board meeting next week, my understanding was that, and maybe that's what Mr. Gaston, what you're going to address, that there might want to be some discussion about the technology supervisor position, that we actually pull that from the consent agenda and act on it separately so that there can be that discussion.
I think more than discussion, just highlighting that we're creating a position, maybe a basis as to why we're creating.
And I think that would be very thoughtful. So I believe that basically what would happen on the, um... At the main meeting would be to, um, for the motion to accept the consent agenda, with the exception of item four point one three, which will be acted on separately. And then, once the consent agenda is voted on, then they would act on four point one three with the motion. Item four in the consent calendar is the gifts and donations information. And I will point this out at the board meeting, but it is incredible to me looking at the value for the full year of '16, '17, at $281,000, and just the month of June at $90,000, almost $91,000 value in donation, it's just a good sign. Item four, consent agenda five, is the out-of-state travel. Item six is the budget deadlines exhibit. This comes to the board with just corrections in the dates for annual items. As an exhibit, it doesn't become twice.
To this, I see here on May 15th, it does show the revision dates and whatnot for the, for the calendar year, but it was recently added that on November, no later than November 1st, we need to have another hearing and the adoption of the 1.06 teacher salary increase. At that time, we'll have to go again and revise the budget in that one particular area after the annual financial report is finalized. So in that way, we have a solid number to base the 1.06 on. So that'll be in addition here.
When you say 1.06, you mean the 1, 2, 3 number?
No, the 1.06 teacher salary increase.
Oh, the percentage.
The percentage.
Gotcha, okay.
Sorry, 1.06 percent teacher salary increase, yes. I read your email.
I didn't.
So you should think you said yes.
When did you send your email? Okay.
So I don't know if we want to include that in here and update that, or if it's just a matter of knowing that we'll have to do that. It's, it's recommended that, at the time that we approve the AFR, that we also call for the hearing at that particular time to allow that tender process to be done.
November 1st, is that?
No later than November 1st. I think it should be on the calendar.
I do too.
We have the meeting scheduled, please. Item seven is the, uh, uh, seventh item in the consent calendar, which is a technical change to the exhibit for our policy. This is to mirror the language that we had revised in our student handbooks. Item eight is the, is a request to increase the hours for therapy staffing because of the increase in our caseload demands from 37 and a half to 40 hours per day.
I'd like to see this added to our agenda as well.
So, um, so from the consent agenda, I have to... You can note that the 4.8 is possible.
I just, I just see it as a contract, and I think we should be out in open session with the contract.
We'll draft that motion and make sure that's all that we need.
Thank you.
And then on, um, 4.2 is the items that we would act on that we call. So that's there for us to do so. Moving into the section on old business, section five. First item of old business is the revision of the policies. This is the second reading on the bidding and purchasing and audits and financial monitoring policy.
The D I audit.
The D I audit. Item 5.2 is the second presentation of the information on the homeless students and open enrollment. Again, these are simply adding to John Gaston and making a couple of technical changes, but for legality. 5.3, this is the second presentation of the student records policy. On this one, it's only adding to ESA language, replacing the NCLB. On item 5.4, this is the second presentation of the unsafe school choice. Again, these are ESA technical changes. And then item 5.5, which is the last item in the old business, is the support staff sick leave policy. I realize this is the second reading, and we didn't spend enough time on it in class meeting, but this is, I wanted to emphasize a lot of changes as a result of Prop 206, which got most of its publicity around the minimum wage change, but there were significant changes to the earned paid sick time requirements. And so, uh, you'll notice that is a new policy that has been added here. And I also would like to say in, um, in our session that Mrs. Minor spent a lot of time going back and checking the statute on every single one of these to make sure that this was directly reflecting the statute, and there was nothing extra added into this information. And then moving into the new business, section six. The first item in section six is the recommendation to approve the joint resolution between the district and the city, uh, basically agreeing to support the world-class goal of 60% attainment of post-secondary degree certification, or, uh, where's the third term in there?
Industry credential.
Industry credential. Uh, and this was, um, uh, a part of the request by Expectmore, Arizona, which is a partner with the state in raising the standards for Arizona, or the expectations for Arizona. So we did draft the resolution, and it has been reviewed by our legal counsel as well as by the city. And the format was suggested to reflect the resolutions that would normally come from the city and from the district. And so that is what you see here. Any questions, or save it for the meeting?
Would it be appropriate if we were to enter into this to have a review annually of where we're at with Expectmore, Arizona? I know at least one other individual on the board has a little heartburn with, with the partnership thought. And, well, I think that there's a, there are a couple of good reasons to do that. I just think if we put a, um, a revision in on an annual basis in case something weird happens with Expectmore, Arizona.
They just ignore the food service sometimes, so it helps to go through the office. Sometimes they listen to us a little bit more.
Mike, you haven't had this job long enough to answer this question, but what is the percentage generally each year of families who's just, they just don't pay. And I'm not saying they don't pay because they don't have the money, they just don't pay. They take advantage of our, of our policy.
I don't have that, but I can get that for you.
Well, I don't have it by the next meeting.
I do know, like, like Mr. Sanders said, that most of the elementaries do have, we try to nail safe there, safety net, so that, that we don't just run up debt. With this policy now, if it's, if it's followed, it will help, it'll help in that regard because there's a limit there of the three meals for the first two weeks, and then after that, there is, there's just the alternate meal. So then you don't have, while you do have some, some costs there because of the peanut butter crackers and the milk, you don't have that full meal charge and that, that debt running up if you continue to just run them through the line and allow them to, to eat and just continue to run them into the negative. So if the policy is followed, it'll greatly reduce the debt, that debt amount. And PTAs, in my experience, have been more than accommodating and willing to, to try to help make up for that loss or that bad debt in each individual school setting.
I think the other one we get is, especially with the low-income students that aren't completely free but are reduced, a lot of times we have issues because the parents pay us paycheck to paycheck, and if they run out of the little money, we cover some of them until they get their paycheck, they come in and pay it for them, trying to, trying to help because, you know, some, you know, line fluctuates up to between 70 and 80 percent of the free and reduced, and even Starline in Jamaica are in the 40 to 50 percent. So it's not just one school, and sometimes families are really struggling, we do whatever we can to help.
Or like mine, I've got two young men who always forgot their lunch.
Well, absolutely, and if they forget their lunch, we don't, if, if they're hungry, there's, it's a double-sided sword.
Right.
Because it destroys our academics.
Right.
So, and anything we can do to make sure that they're doing the best they can in the afternoons, we try because the academics are so important.
Well, I met yesterday with Ann Taffey on her vacation, so nice of her to come in on her vacation, but with Michelle Lynn, just to go through this whole process, not because it was in the board packet, but because the subject had come up beforehand because Michelle Lynn wants to feed the world and wanted to understand how this was working. And we both definitely walked away understanding that all the schools and the food service is doing everything they can to get these kids to eat. So anybody who's not eating, it's because they don't want to eat, that nobody is hungry by choice, and that was important to understand that.
And, and I just, I have to piggyback on that. There, there was a recent social media thread that went off on, on a side tangent on that same topic, and, you know, that, that it was, can I come in and feed some of these kids that are starving and being denied lunch because they cannot pay? And I know that's a bunch of bull, I've been in the lunchroom and seen that these kids that can't pay are receiving lunch. You know, nobody's getting crackers and water for lunch.
Right.
And, you know, that these policies are here for a reason. I looked up these policies today, they're pretty black and white, these kids are receiving the lunch.
Right.
And, you know, Ann sat here at the last meeting or the one before and explained just how it works. It's not, it's not rocket science, these kids are not coming home starving because of anything of their fault, unless they've chosen not to eat what was provided.
Right, and I think that some of it is, I think if the older, you know, in the high school maybe. I don't know why that is, because nobody knows when you're going through the line that you're getting free and reduced, except maybe the cashier that can see it, you know, ring up, but that would be it. So, but I think for maybe the parents, but Ann told me all the things that she does to get somebody qualified when she sees an issue, or just trying to direct-qualify them, or pull paperwork from the year prior to really make it easy on the parents. So I feel confident that the district is doing everything they can to feed every child every day. I'm not sure what else they could do after going through that meeting yesterday, so. A little psych check on that. It's important.
Six point eleven is the first presentation of EEAG. EEAG are student transportation and private vehicles and business and personal transportation services. The, the change here primarily is adding employee or governing board member so that when you're driving a district vehicle or driving your own vehicle, then you have the same, same rules and policy. Every once in a while, these policies come into question, and so it was kind of interesting for me to see them, because we do have very strict policy about our, if we're transporting students, it must be at a district. And so occasionally leadership came about that, but these are the policies.
So governing board members can't transport students?
Actually, I believe that you can on a school-related trip.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, in a school vehicle.
What do we do, we have new principals, and of course, we have, we're always hiring new teachers, I don't know, what do we do to let our new principals and teachers know of this policy? Because I tell you, it comes up more often than you realize, and it seems like there's a lot of ignorance out there about this.
Can you, if you'd help me with that? I don't know the answer.
We had a conversation just at directors this week regarding the changes in policy, and that very, that very example came up. And I believe that, I think moving forward, going into next school year, that that'll be a, a topic or an agenda item on an upcoming ATM right at the beginning of the school year to, to bring about these changes, but also to touch, touch base on, on what you just said, and that's talking about the expectation of the policy requirements of transporting students and the teacher's responsibility in doing so.
Because we're always talking about liability, you know, the district liability, and making sure that we're always cognizant of that. And I don't know if the principals have a handbook of, I don't remember, I have one, of these kinds of policies that really protect the district, not, not to mention its children, but to protect the district. And, and your teachers, I don't know if this is included in the, you know, new teacher handbook. Can you get that more, like, that company more in high school, where a teacher runs a kid home to get something? So I'm just bringing it up.
Seems like, I don't know the answer.
Seems like in this day and age, being any type of teacher or administrator, that you would make darn sure what the law is on driving a student in your car before you ever even considered it, just because of, you know, society.
I don't know about here, but I know this is a big problem in school districts.
That's it?
You know, Suzie lives next to me, and I'm going to school, do you need a ride to school? I give her a ride to school. Then she gets in your private vehicle, you're liable, and an awful lot of people don't realize that.
I guess I just feel liable for anybody who gets in my vehicle.
Well, we don't transport, once they're at school, we go around, we always, they're supposed to be in a district car, and we go through one of the directors, and, you know, this is why we need it, they get called over, and it all goes through the district office. Especially, once in a while, we have special education students that we have to transfer from the school with their little testing hand, like smoke train from us, but it's always with the district car, and district employees come through the district office, and we come in school on the back end porch. That's a great thought, because we do have teachers that are from our community who have grown up with people who give them a ride to school.
And the policy is very specific to school business. So we're talking about, if you're traveling on school business, then these are the rules. And we're not allowed to use a district vehicle for personal business, but...
So bringing their student to school because you live near that would not be school business.
Correct.
That would be personal business.
So they would be, their insurance would be... All right, six point twelve is the resolutions for the fiscal year, these are our annual resolutions, who can sign what. We have a whole list of those. Six thirteen is the appointment, the request to approve the appointment of our Starline elementary principal, that we do go through the selection process, and the selection team has recommended Mrs. Truasi as principal. Item six point one four is the request to, to exclude, make an exception to the moratorium, which was imposed in 2015 by the board, to approve two additional clubs as tax credit clubs. And requests are for the Educators Rising as a tax credit club, which is the club that is tied to the educators' class at the high school, that's now part of the CTE program that was added through 1617, and then the yearbook program at Thunderbolt, which has not had really been promoted.
I have an issue with this. First of all, if they pass the moratorium, I assume it was because there were far too many of these things promulgated. Have we done away with any? I mean, we had a moratorium because it was much too prevalent. If we haven't done away with any, why should we do away with moratorium? Second thing is, I think it probably should have been presented to us as two separate items, because I might not agree with one of these, but I might agree with the other. I have a real problem with this educational one. I think we're blurring the lines overall in what our job as a high school is. Our job as a high school is to prepare students to go to college and seek a career. They may choose education, they may not. We're blurring this with the fact that we want them to become educators, and I have a real issue with that, because we all know that the majority of teachers who get an education degree at college don't stay in the field. And we may very well be encouraging students to undertake something which isn't fit for them.
That's true of any of our programs, that students think they're interested in high school, and then they don't pursue.
But there's a difference between them being interested and us encouraging.
Well, the encouragement, simply the tax credit pays for the trips, you know, their contests, it pays for the, for the trips, and tax credit pays for transportation for all of those kinds of clubs, not just the CTE clubs. And so other, now this gives the parents a way to pay for the transportation and have it applied at their tax credit, which is a good thing. Otherwise, the parents are going to have to come up with the money because the school district is not, and the parents won't get tax credit.
Well, as I say, I'm probably not going to be loved when this is all over with, but if that's what the parents and the child decides is a career they definitely want to go into, then the parents should foot the bill. And we sit around and sell out here to the community that you get a tax credit for aiding education. No, you get a tax credit for helping extracurricular activities. There's a huge difference in those two statements. And a tremendous amount of tax money is being diverted to tax credits for extracurricular activities that have no profound effect on the education of the student.
And I'm agreeing with you.
Well, I said I wasn't going to be loved when it was over.
I'm still loving you.
I have, I have a real problem with us, because we know we're short of teachers, we're going to try to influence students to become teachers. I have a problem with that.
I don't think that's...
I don't think that's a high school place.
So this, we have had in place the CTE program for many years of early childhood education, so we have the preschool, and we have students who are enrolled in that CTE class, and then we added just this year the education professions class, which I couldn't think of, and we have had, we're getting that started again, it's an elective, it's a CTE option. However, for it to, to qualify as a career and technical education course, the students are required to compete in the competitions, and so for all of our CTE courses currently, they are tax credit clubs so that they can earn that money for their competitions, and so this would be adding it to the CTE list of tax credit clubs. The, the burden for those competitions would be probably on the students themselves if it was not, had the opportunity to provide that. This is, as an aside for that. So this, this club would actually serve the students who are in the early childhood as well as the educational professions classes.
And maybe a philosophical difference here, you and I could discuss this more, but what I find is, one of the things that we wanted to do is, for every student who comes to the high school, he finds a niche there, and often that's not sports, it's often an extracurricular type of activity, which means there's a club, and they need, and it becomes a place, a safe place, that the student makes friends, and it's, it's not just part of his career that he seeks, but it's a social place, it's why the student who comes to school often in the first place is to participate in things like that. And the more that you offerings that you have for all kinds of different students, I think the healthier the environment is.
Just as they put a moratorium on it two years ago, they put a moratorium on it because it was getting excessive.
They put a moratorium on it because we couldn't afford the sports program, we didn't want, we, we wanted a moratorium on all the other programs because sports was so expensive. Now that the board has decided to help the sports program, or the town has, through the, the override, now that frees us up a little bit to do some things like this. That was very difficult to, to use money for anything with the sports program at the high school because it's so expensive. Now we've got a little leeway there.
See, I don't understand what you're saying, because if these people are getting a tax deduction for giving money to Oriental Basket Weaving, Oriental Basket Weaving gets the money, that has no effect on sports.
Where is that? I don't see that here.
I'm just saying, that has no effect on sports. If I give, if I give a tax donation to the chess club, I'm not affecting sports, I'm giving my tax addition, donation to the chess club.
An enormous amount of money is given, is not designated to any particular club, whether it's sports or not.
I understand.
We have to protect the sports program, so that we have, and now we've got the leeway, we're not...
You don't understand how this protects the sports program.
Well, what it, what it did in the past, and I, and Mr. Sanders and I were, we felt the pain of this, back when they put this moratorium in place, the elementary schools were, took, took a major hit. Elementary's tax credit program consists of kindergarten enrichment and all no preference, that's it. So basically, it's kindergarten enrichment and kindergarten enrichment, because the all no preference goes to kindergarten enrichment. So that, that affected the elementaries deeply at that time, and the purpose behind that moratorium, and what Mrs. Cox is talking about, is that when you, when we had all of these clubs open, when individuals come to someone like myself, or my parents, or other members of the community and say, I'm part of this group, would you be willing to pledge part of your tax credit dollars for me? When you have that, all those options, it does, and it did in some way start to take away from athletics, because where I was going to donate to athletics, and now I have someone else over here who I really know well, who needs this for a different tax credit program, that money is now either split, instead of the full 400 going to athletics, I might do 200 and 200 now. So, so athletics did take... So athletics did take, take a little bit of a, of a hit over, over time. Now, that was a few years ago when this moratorium was put in place. Now that, with the passage of the override, it has allowed a little bit of breathing room so that we can contribute some dollars towards athletics. Now, I, I still feel for elementary. I think that they need to be next on these considerations for allowing other tax credit opportunities for programs at the elementary level. Now, this might not be a popular statement either, but I, I believe that, that, that needs to be considered as we move forward, because there are so many K6 kids who, who are great at a lot of things, but yet aren't, aren't privileged to have some of these after school extracurricular enrichment programs, because they're just not available through tax credit contributions. But I agree with you that if, and I think the middle school and the high school principals have been doing this, they've been evaluating their current tax credit programs, the status of them, and the participation levels, and they have been encouraged to go ahead and look to see if there is an active program there, if it's, if it's functioning. If not, then to bring that to the board to consider closing that program.
And that's, that's what I'm saying, is we had a moratorium, and we're now saying, let's waive it for these two instances. And we haven't said anything about cutting any other programs. And my point is this, if you've got $500 coming in the door, you can have $100 for five programs, or $5 for 100 programs. You can't do both. And we need to look at what we're really good at, what's really benefiting the kids, and drop the other programs. And then allow the money to be channeled into things that truly service the students. Otherwise, we're just diluting the program. I also just do not agree, and that's just me, but I do not agree with us getting in the business of influencing curriculum.
I think that the, the whole concept of this program was probably born out of the vision 2020. Probably. Because it, it was brought up, as a matter of fact, I, I did allude to the fact that we should grow our own, meaning encourage, you know, people from within. And, but at the time, I, there were some ASU representatives at, at our group. Were you there? And they said, "No, that's never going to happen." So, and it's not happening at ASU, but I think that that's why this program was probably sought after, because there is such a shortage, because new teachers going in or dropping off, I don't remember what the rate is, but it's, it's ridiculous. And so they're trying to find a way for kids to enter the, the profession that have ties to ASU, because we're a rural area and it's hard to recruit. So I think that was the purpose. My issue doesn't even have to do with what you're talking about. My issue with this program is in researching it and looking at it. I have big concerns with it, and, you know, I really hate to go on about it, but I'm going to have to. So, looking at the curriculum, it's asterisk that what you have to do in this program, must do lesson topics, value-based assessments. I have a problem with anybody doing value-based assessments, because they're assessing my child's values and trying to change them. Supporting social justice in your community, this is a requirement. I have a big problem with that. Culturally responsive teaching. These are issues and red flags for me, and I don't necessarily want young, impressionable high schoolers going through this program, to go into this profession, to turn into teachers that are going to further this agenda instead of teach for knowledge. That's the problem I have with this particular program.
In coordination with what you're saying, I'm not going to sit here and tell them what they should have in their curriculum. But what I am going to say is this, we have schools of education in our colleges that are designed specifically to develop teachers. That's what they were designed for. We are sitting here saying, "We're going to set up a curriculum that will augment them." That's not our purpose. That is not a high school's job. Our job is to prepare the base elements a person needs to go into any career, and be successful. A real problem with this...
Do you think we should...
I, I have, I have the same problem, and I'll, I'll tell you one that will cause heartaches. When you went to college, did you take, high school, did you take calculus?
I would never have passed high school if I had.
Did you take calculus?
Yes.
Did you take calculus?
No.
Almost, probably, probably 90% of us did not take calculus in high school. Why? Because calculus is considered a college credit. It was a college course that was taught in a college, and you went under the strict discipline of college learning. But what we've done is we started teaching these courses to the high school. We're going to, we're going to augment, but you still have to take college calculus. When you leave this high school and you go to a college, you will have to take college calculus. So what have we accomplished by putting that extra course into our, into our curriculum? And we don't think about that. We sit there and say, "Oh, but our kids are getting all this good stuff." But that good stuff means nothing if it is not transferable to a college.
What, do you think we should get rid of other programs like autos, and TV production, and sound production?
I think all of them should be evaluated.
But I mean, they do the same thing that this program does, not as far as what Nicole is talking about, but an avenue that students think that they would like to be teachers, students think they would like to be automatenics, they think that they would like to work on sound production, they want a career in music. They may never do it, but it's an exploratory...
All those programs ought to be evaluated, and if they're functional, fine. The problem I have with this teacher is that, sitting in this room are a bunch of teachers, and every one of them is going to encourage students to take the teaching course. You've got to become a teacher. Being a teacher is great. There's a, there's a bias to this program. And whether you admit, whether you admit it or not, there's a bias to this program.
In this day and time, you're not going to find teachers telling others to go into teaching. That is a given. He tells you that. That's, that's, that we, that horse has left the barn, I'm telling you right now. So don't worry about that.
Is it, is it possible to separate this into two chunks? I don't, I don't have any opposition to it. And, and I, I think that if Nicole could send her research out, that would be helpful as well.
We'll do a revision to the agenda.
Can we do a 6.14A? We have to actually have a number, 6.14...
6.14.1, 6.14.2.
That might work.
Who wrote that curriculum, Nicole?
This is on their website. If you go to Educators Rising, it's...
EducatorsRising.org.
Yeah.
Quite interesting.
It's quite interesting. And, and what really caught me off guard was because, or what made me even look further was when I was reading the bylaws that's in our board packet, it says, "To unite in a common bond without regard to race, creed, or national origin." So if we're uniting in a common bond without regard to race, why are we required and must do lesson topics on race? Do you see what I'm saying? It like contradicts itself, in my opinion. And so, I, I don't know, I just have concerns, and I've only spent a couple hours reading through that website, but there...
CTE?
No.
It's, it's...
No, this isn't, this isn't like Vick or Skills USA, or FBLA, or...
I mean, it may be going that way.
They do have a state competition, because they have the National Educators Rising, and then they have the Arizona Education Educators Rising. And so for Arizona to count it as a CTE, they provide the competitions and so forth.
Right, yeah. I went, and then I, I wonder if, who's going to be here at the board meeting?
No one. The principal will be there, but everybody's out, yeah.
Well, maybe the teacher, Mrs. Gray could, if she's in town, could attend.
Well, maybe I could...
And the question that I also have written down is, for our education professions course, what is the curriculum? Because that's the curriculum for their course, as I understand it, not necessarily for the club.
For the competition, that's, that's what they have to get rid of.
But I don't know if that's the competition, as I think that's the course curriculum.
The academy curriculum.
Yeah. Okay, so if we're, if we've adopted that curriculum, I'm curious to...
Okay.
Also, under the bylaws, if you look under section seven, it isn't a big thing, but I think it is something that we should encourage. It says that if they don't show up properly dressed, though, you may be required to wear an ugly backup uniform. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That needs to be struck.
You're not the only one that noticed that. She's got it down, I've got it underlined. The other thing that I had a problem with was number nine, and it says, "To create school loyalty and help preserve the principles of democracy." And that's frustrating, because this is an education program, and we're talking about our country as a democracy. And I guess I have a huge problem with that, because most people, including myself without notes, could not articulate the difference between a republic and a democracy, but I know that we're constantly...
It's not most people.
Right. But that concerns me as well, because we're not educating our children on the fact that we are not a democracy, we are not mob rule in this country. And, you know, I've got a whole list of founders quotes here warning us, "Please make sure that you educate, you know, our society on the distinct differences between a republic and a democracy." And we're not doing that, and this is an educator program, so that kind of concerned me, too.
Let me pose another question. If one of our other CTA, CTE programs does exceptionally well, and becomes competitive at the national level, who pays their transportation?
Tax credit.
Tax credit and...
Well, did you, did you catch what Diana said? Because I didn't know this until you just said it. In order to be a CTE course, you have to compete.
I'm just saying.
You have to compete.
If they become competitive, if they become competitive, and they come to the board and ask for transportation funds, do we grant them to them?
They pay for, they pay for it through tax credit, to parents, and for fundraisers.
If they get to go out of state.
Mm-hmm. Evan O does not pay for their travel.
That's all we approve, is that we give them permission to leave the state or to travel.
Because that is extracurricular. So, but they have to compete at the local level, they don't have to go to state nationals.
Right.
Is there a local, local competition?
Yeah, there's, yeah.
There is, okay. I didn't realize there was anything local that really...
Well, county.
I know. We the People is the only thing I've seen county, but that's the only competition I've attended, so...
And a lot of the clubs do additional fundraising, and it's incredible what those teachers do with trying to raise extra funds other than tax credit.
So we, and we do outstanding in our tax credits, but I just want to remind everybody that tax credits really do come out of the general fund, so when we're talking to...
And I think people need to understand that, you know. Ever since I got to Lake Havasu, I've had people tell me, my accountant for one, tell me, "Oh boy, you can really help education." No, you can help extracurricular activities. And people need to understand that, because it is not a direct asset to education.
Well, it is for kindergarten, for sure.
Well, okay, at the lower levels, but...
Could you just send your tax credit money to kindergarten?
But it is, it is just helpful to our community, period. So, you know, whereas we only get $7,000 whatever in total for our kids, and Phoenix is getting 14, or at least that $400 is staying here and not getting dispersed out of Phoenix. It's a way to keep it here.
For, for this item coming back, we're going to split it into two. One of the things that I think we should bring back is the list of tax credit clubs, so that you can see which are the list of tax credit clubs. And I know we've taken several off the list, but it might have been in the fall. Do you remember when we had that item at the site? But I remember this year, we took several of the clubs off the list.
That had zeros in the accounts.
Yes.
There was no club anymore.
Right.
Right, right. So there were some removed, so we'll find out how many have been removed, and then try to get a little bit more information about the CTE requirement for the competitions. Anything else that we should have, bring that through the center?
Maybe just the...
Some revisions and tweaks?
Sorry.
What do you wish? I'm sorry, go ahead.
What, what our kids are learning in this curriculum?
In the curriculum. Anything else? Item 15 is the request to approve the architectural services for our district-wide bond projects. This is the result of an RFQ that went out, RFQ is, that went out, and this is the one that hasn't... I think the location was...
My only question is, and this isn't just for this action item, but when we're doing RFQs and we're rating them, evaluating them, and we're giving them, and I think we've talked about this before, but I'm not sure where we're at with it now, if they've done business with us before, sometimes all they need is one point for doing business with us before, that puts them over the edge the next time they do a bit. You know what I'm saying? So are we going to discuss that at any point?
And that, that depends on, on the scope of work and the qualifications and the parameters on which you set for the RFP or RFQ. In this particular one, there was no requirement of, or no points given for any type of work done with the district.
In the past, okay.
It's, it's completely moldable and shapeable as to what you want to include in it. And in this particular RFQ, the real reason behind all of this, and we've talked about it before, was to kind of conduct an informal interview and sending out these, basically the scope of work and the qualifications that we're looking for, in hopes to solicit community members, architectural firms and whatnot here locally, to try to solicit their response. As you can see here, out of, I believe it was 15 vendors on our list that this was sent out, to two of which were local, we had four responses. So we evaluated them and ranked them based on the four responses that we received, and that's the breakdown of the scoring, is from top score to rank one to four.
Are any of these, and I just don't know these firms, so are any of them local?
All four are from out of, our Phoenix area. Yeah, we didn't have any local response at all.
But we sent it out to...
We sent it out. There were two on our bidding list.
Okay.
Follow-up email, we did receive an email confirmation that they received it, but only the four out of 15 have responded.
Mike, will this, the firm that we choose have anything at all to do with the renovations to the high school field?
They could have, they could have some influence on that. Basically, the, the point of this was to do our due diligence in trying to solicit as many responses as possible, and then allowing us to dwindle that down to a pool in which we can evaluate. And then we would like to select, or just at least recommend that out of the four, the top two would probably be the, the two that we would call on the most. They happen to have cooperative contracts, so in this case, it would be easier to procure them from this point, since we already looked at their qualifications. Now, actually going out and having them, having them start on a particular project, whether it's the high school athletic field, or it could be a roof replacement on another school. We don't have to go out for RFPs, RFQs the entire time. We've already narrowed it down to qualified vendors, they're on cooperatives, we can then engage them at any point to help us with these bond projects. So it basically streamlines everything down to where we can just choose now at this point.
And that makes sense. I just want to highlight, when we're sending out to local people that aren't responding, because that's the biggest complaint that we hear, is we're not including them. So, I don't know if that can be a one-liner... So, I don't know if that can be a one-liner, you know, would we do an RFP for anything going forward? If we just put, you know, it was requested from 15 vendors, two were local, no response.
It actually was, no, here it is. It's 20 firms, yeah, including two firms located in Lake Havasu City.
Sorry.
It's paragraph, the second paragraph, first paragraph under rationale.
So, we haven't been, begun to, the board has not been asked for approval of, say, anything like the turf for, for the high school field.
Correct.
When will we, when will we start getting those bids? Is there already been a company chosen or a certain type? It seems like I saw in the bond proposal for the voters, it was pretty specific.
It said field.
It just said field.
It was, it was a specific kind.
No, it didn't even say that. In the, in the, in the bond packet that went out, the word that was used to describe the topping, which is what we're talking about, to the actual football field and baseball field, was just the word field.
Okay.
And because of that, it would swing anywhere from some sort of an artificial turf all the way to some sort of an actual grass environment. So, that, the, the material is more than likely going to be a cork-based, according to what I've heard from Carl Thompson, what his thought process was, a cork-based turf. But that hasn't been chosen.
Not concrete.
If you want to play football on concrete, it's fine with me.
But it's standard to, I've just spent all this time in Louisiana with the people from a high school who've been, I think they're on their third turf, artificial turf.
Without a concrete base as opposed to a cork base.
Okay, so this is maybe new technology.
It is.
For less injuries because of that reason.
But then there are other issues that, you know, as most projects of this size, that you don't anticipate.
That's, that's way higher than your architect.
Well, but things like, they, they did it, and then they didn't realize that a soccer field is three feet wider on each side than the football field. And then the striking for soccer and football, it was, everything was done backwards instead of being really organized. And I'm just, I'm just, this was something I wanted when I was at the high school. And I, you know, now that our dreams have come true, I just want to make sure it's done well, and also that the turf they have now, they're putting their second one in, it lasts about 10 years. And then it gets worn, and you start having injuries. So, the one they're putting in is going to cost $400,000. And I'm wondering, where, where are we going to get the next $400,000 every 10 years to do this?
Your, your mileage may vary.
It may vary. It may, but, and then all of the injuries that they get because the, the kids spit, of course, as you know, young athlete boys do, I spit all the time, but they're always spitting on the field, and then you have injuries and you get MRSA. And you come off the field and they have, it's like a carpet burn, and you have to have cans and cans of antiseptic that you spray on the, on the burn, because if you don't, it leads to terrible kinds of flesh wounds and illnesses and things. So, I mean, it is what it is, and we voted to do it, but...
It, it just said field in the final analysis, so there's, there's some wiggle room.
Okay.
So, the project, what, what will occur is we'll, we'll begin by more than likely procuring the architect and the engineer to, to start to draft out and give us the, the drawings and the proposals of what it's going to look like. There's already been some conversations regarding adjusting the placement of the field, turning it a little bit to allow for more parking. So, as we, as we procure these firms, those conversations will begin to take place as to what we would like to see in the renderings, and then also the engineering, what's going to be involved in, in that whole process. The other, the other thing that we'll have to consider as well is, will the architect be the lead and point of contact on that? Because we, we really don't have the manpower personnel-wise to park somebody there all day to, to oversee a project. So, the, the question will be, do we, do we hire a firm to be that point of contact, whether it's utilizing the architect firm, or then, or going out to a general and having them be the individuals on the ground who will orchestrate the subcontractors and everyone coming in and out of that facility? Of course, with oversight from the district as well. So, it, it'll, it'll begin with, hopefully here during the summer, maybe mid to end of summer, where we start the, the drawing and engineer process, because we are going to allow for football to, to occur. I know many were wanting to get it done before that, but even if, even if we started the project, the day that we actually received bond funds into, into our account, we, we would have, it would have been way too close to, to even try to make that happen. So, the process is, and the timeline is to, to procure the architect, get that rolling, because that's going to take some time. Permits are going to need to be pulled. It's going to take some time. By the time that all of those drawings and schematics are in place, hopefully the football season will be close to finishing at that time, and then as soon as they're done, we can start moving ground. That's, that's the plan. And then having it all done for graduation, so that it'll be nice and beautiful.
And the soccer season.
It sounds like a good plan.
We'll, we'll try.
Sounds like a good plan, but we need to make sure that we voice that to the public. There's an awful lot of people who wonder if we're going to have the field ready for football. We can put them at ease real quick. We can just voice the fact of what you just said.
Well, we have, we have the press right here.
I know. I was saying that so he could hear me.
I think we actually have already put that out once before, so that has...
There's always, there's always those who are hopeful, and maybe we changed our mind and made that happen, but...
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying.
I think it would have just, it would have created more confusion and frustration if we tried to cram it in, in hopes to be ready for the football season. That just leads to, as you know, mistakes and errors, and now what do we do? Because we tried to, we tried to cut the ribbon when we probably should have had a little extra time.
Anything else on that? Item 16 is the mission statement and guiding principles. And I would like to redistribute this information to you here. I sent an email out, and I know you guys are inundated as well. Here are, in the guiding principles and the mission statement, the only change that was made for this prep was the addition of an S on solutions, which was a manifold error. We did have suggestions, and I did provide to the board the comments that we received from those folks who took the opportunity to review and make suggestions. And so, in the paper, sorry, can I give you guys a... In the paper that I just handed out to you is just kind of a summary. The, there was a point made that there was a pronoun reference error in the, in the mission actual summary statement, which is accurate. And so, there are some suggestions of how that might be rewarded. And then there were also a couple of other suggestions that included respect to school property and also including students under the bullet about learning relationships. And then there were a few others that were noted in here that may have been not a careful reading of the document, is the reason that they were suggested. I know that would affect. What I would like to propose is that the board review this information, and that at the meeting, that we make any revisions that the board suggests to this final document and approve it as revised.
I just don't want to bog down that, that meeting.
Well, we could talk now as well.
That's right. That's a good idea.
I would very much like to incorporate suggestions that staff members make, because it is their mission statement.
And how many total comments did we get? I don't know that we got that many.
Yeah, we actually...
You got a surprising number, though, really.
Twelve responses.
That's pretty positive for things like this.
And for the most part, they were positive.
They were very positive.
Very positive, so I think this is...
I think simply, I mean, I just proposed respect to school property, put it in. And I like number three from here, opposite of three. And we could take a quick decision and put it in the board packet.
Okay, and what do you mean, respect school property?
So, that was one of the suggestions that came out more than once.
But that wasn't in the actual mission statement.
Correct. That was one of the, the items that was under the role of students.
Right.
And so, that's on the second page of the guiding principles. And what we had was be respectful of others and the learning environment. In the original, it said respect to school property.
Right.
I, I actually like the learning environment, because I think it's a more encompassing statement.
Well, I would just like to incorporate teachers' comments into the mission statement. I appreciate those who did read and were discerning and took their time to do it in it by putting that statement in. It's just a way of acknowledging that we appreciate that they're being, they have input. Remember, that's the thing I've said all along, both teachers have input in the mission statement.
Wow. It's unfortunate that only 12 teachers, and I don't even know that they were all teachers, because it went out to all staff.
Well, there were only five of us, and now there are 12 teachers. And you know that it's...
I understand. I understand. My, my point is, is that here you have, you have the superintendent reaching out to all 500-plus employees, staff members, and only 12 people responded, even if it was to say, hey, thanks.
She did that at a very busy time of year, and I acknowledge that those 12 people went out of their way at a very busy time of year, and I appreciate it. I say, you know, your glass is half-empty and my glass is half-full on this topic.
No, I, I, I don't have a problem with this.
I just didn't want it to seem like anybody was trying to exclude staff.
Oh, no, I don't think that was.
If that's the only thing that staff can come back with is respect school property, I think we did. Okay, John?
Really, there, most everyone made comments about it being updated was appropriately. So, I thought that was, that was nice to see that those, because often when you ask for feedback, what you get is those who are unhappy as opposed to those who are happy.
And on this sheet, you've got four, I think I'm seeing this correctly, you've got four versions, and it would be very easy tonight just to select one. My preference is number three. So, I just don't want to bog down the meeting next week.
Number one is the original.
Yeah.
I like three and four.
Let's find either one, three or four.
Can we add, can we combine three and four and add the necessary? And perhaps the all students that's, that's in version four, and then...
Oh, I like, I like necessary number four. I was just looking at the grammatical error.
Right.
I like necessary very much in number four.
We could engage each student, and then number three, we leave out the same and just add necessary.
I just go to number four.
The, the big difference here is, from, again, from my perspective, is it's much more personal when you engage each student responsibility versus all students, because all students now makes them collective, not individuals anymore. To make the pronoun reference correctly, you have to change one or the other, which is why on number three, well, number two is just making it correct. Each student is so that each may graduate. And number three is so that all students may graduate. So, there you're, the reason you engage each one is because you want all students to graduate. Or then you go to the all students instead of each, and you can keep they.
I think number three is a better statement, but I think we could move necessary up into number three.
And the social skills necessary to become responsible citizens.
That's a good answer.
And I think one thing to note, just for ourselves, with these comments that we received, there really weren't any substantive changes. There was grammatical changes. And that's, that's important. People approved of the overall document. They just had some...
Housekeeping. Housekeeping.
Yeah.
Going back to, to respect school property, a teacher during the course of a day, the number of incidents with broken pencils, not using materials resourcefully, throwing things away that aren't, you know, that just a little, little piece is, has been used, and that they, the kids, you know, throw the whole piece of paper, whatever it is, away. I mean, this is something on teachers' minds constantly, is to teach every day. It's, it's in their heads, not to you, not to me, but, and that's why teachers think it's important, is to spell that out.
Well, and, and I, and I think we do, again, pencil in the classroom is part of the learning environment. Paper provided is part of the learning environment. The desk, everything in that room is part of that learning environment.
Okay, let's just say that you're reading the mission statement as a teacher, and you decide, I'm going to specifically focus on the role of students. And this has our school board and the entire staff has come up with a mission statement, and here is my role as the teacher, the school district personnel person, and here is your role, the role of students. It's much clearer to students, especially young students, is that you say, well, respect property, well, respect school property. This, this is wonderful, I mean, what you're saying, but it's just more specific for young children to understand. That's all I'm going to say, because we're already getting bogged down. So, I've made my point, and I'm done.
See, when I think of school property, I think of like the buildings and stuff. I don't think of the paper and the pencils.
Well, do, that's why...
Because the parents are sending that in a lot of the time, so I'm not thinking about that as school property. I'm thinking, don't tag.
You've got textbooks, you've got computers, you've got...
Don't, right. I mean, that kind of stuff, but I, I wasn't even thinking about it.
Well, and most of that happens in the restroom, which is not necessarily a learning environment, depending upon who you talk to.
That's true, too.
Well, you come on a lot of restrooms.
Because at the high school, that's the school property that would be damaged. And the suggestion from the one, the last one was to just, to leave it the way it is, but add to separate rule again, have that respect to property.
I think if it's, if it's easier for students to understand to respect property, I don't have a problem with that.
Add it up there.
I, I really don't.
I, I think pragmatic would be added.
I thought it was pretty impressive. People went to the old document and actually compared.
Compared. And found something that was missing.
After learning environment.
So, we're going to add the respect school property?
As an addition, perhaps?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. And then at the end, we'll switch, we'll revise that last statement. And so, what I'll do is provide you a copy with the revisions and create a unit, I think, part two as well.
And we're going with three and just adding necessary.
Item 17 is all of our vouchers, activity terms, and auxiliary terms.
If it's okay with the board, because student activities is not part of this voucher process in which we, we do the report on a, on a weekly and then report it on a monthly basis, I'd like to try to find a way to... I'd like to try to find a way to modify these other sheets to show you the expenditures per that student, like K student activity fund, so you can clearly see at the bottom what those expenditures were for that. And then continue to do so for nine through twelve. It's just because they are, they're similar, but they're different. They're not processed the same, so this report is different than our other activity reports. I've tried to adapt it and to modify it and change it to where we could still add it. But it begins to make the other calculations in here as data transfers over a little bit more, it makes a little bit more of an issue. And I just don't want to upset the formulas that are currently in here and then have to every month go back and check it for accuracy because I'm trying to add one line into this format that is talking about vouchers, which is completely different than the student activity. So if that's okay with you, again, I'll find a way to actually make it very noticeable and clear so that you can see, you don't have to look through everything, you can just look right to the bottom of the page and then identify it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was impressed to see the performing arts has $3,000 in there. But conversely, the math and money class owes money.
They have money?
They have negative balance.
Oh, they don't. So they're teaching them about math and money.
They're overdrawn. We've actually got two or three on here that are overdrawn.
I'm wondering, you know, are teachers responsible for making sure students pay those fees? I mean, I know the bookstore ultimately is, but if the teacher's not making sure, for instance, allied health and biology, then, I haven't wanted to bring this up before, but it is something. Look at the athletic entry phase. I'm just curious about what's going on here. Why we have those holes.
There are times during the year when money will be transferred from, let's say, like the principal's account and then deposited into these accounts where there is a negative balance. I can speak at the elementary level, but, for example, we have a principal's account on our gifts and donations. And if I purchase something, my intent is to pay for it out of the principal's account where I know I have my receipt. But my purchase will actually technically be coded to my destruction account. And so that will occur, which will typically draw that to a negative balance. And then I, I made it a practice where I monitored this as a principal every month. That's just how I did it. And immediately when I saw that my purchase pulled one of my accounts into the negative, then I had to issue a request to the business office to transfer money from this account to that account to make that account balance out and make it either zero or on the positive side. So that's what does occur during the year. So at the end of the year, all of these negatives should be either as zero or as positive. That's my experience from the elementary level. And I will get that information for the board meeting just to make sure that that is indeed true.
Also, should this be April and then I report, start to show up?
These are actually, these are two months behind. The vouchers are only one month, because again, the activity funds, we have to wait for the management statement to come in and that doesn't happen until several weeks into this past month. And to reconcile all of this within the time of the work session is a pretty difficult task.
Just a question, nothing that's big, just, do you keep a record of requested transfer line item fund? Better words, what I'm getting at is sometimes a school can have a line item that really is simply a reserve to be transferred at later times, if you know what I'm saying. And do you keep a record when schools ask you to transfer funds from one place to another?
Like the example I gave with my principal account?
Yeah.
That actually happens either via email or requisition. So there'd either be a trail via email, because we do save that, just so we can make sure that we can prove that the individual who is responsible for those funds initiated that request to transfer. Or it's done through an actual formal requisition to transfer money from one account.
Okay, I'm just asking, because historically you sometimes can find places where adjustments can be made because they're continually transferring funds from this one account to this other account or something.
Normally you'll see that, like with athletics, from what I can see and what I've been told, athletics is one of those big ones that as they continue to have costs associated with the fact that they're running an athletics program, those transfers will be made at a later date. Right now, for example, when it comes to transportation, I've signed several documents just within the last week or two where the transportation of a group using a vehicle is now being billed back to transportation to offset the cost of their use of that vehicle or bus, for example. So in time, it does roll back to where it's supposed to go. There's a proper debit that is made and a credit where it's applied.
Item six point one eight is the benefit changes for 2017-18. And this aligns to the budget approval of the 5% increase, the not-repay for retirees, the dependent premiums, and the reflectives.
On the back page here, is this a gold plan? Is this a selected plan that we have all these numbers for?
We have a gold, we had a gold and then we have a silver available for retirees.
Gold is for just for employees, current employees, but there is a silver option available for retirees, because they have to contribute some of their premium, because it says it goes more there that we only input and we only provide $4,000 plus whatever ASRS contributes. So the addition in premium, the extra premium, is up to them. So we did create a silver plan to help minimize that extra cost that they have to pay for their premium. This should be, and it doesn't say on here whether it's gold or silver, but looking at the cost, the premiums, it looks like it's the gold plan.
I was just curious, because I couldn't recollect. There were so many votes at the last EBT meeting that I wasn't sure if they actually made that choice for the upcoming year. They selected all the contracts, the rates were set, but I don't remember any conversation about whether it was a gold or a silver, and I do the year before, so that's why I was asking.
Gold for employees, silver as an option for retirees. There wasn't a vote to remove the silver plan, so I'm guessing they're going to continue as is, but that option's only available for retirees.
And we did add an item six point one nine, that is not in the document, that was provided at the tables this evening. This item is for approval to replace the H-back mechanical units of the Cabus High School. These were the units that were damaged when we had the power surge. And so we have gone out, gone forbid on those and have left that information back to.
To two local firms. I see that.
Two local firms and a Phoenix firm.
And on this one, this is the one I was thinking about with the backup. So this one does have the backup information on the responses.
So who's paying for this?
Right now, we are in the process of submitting it through our insurance. Because of the circumstances with the situation at the high school where one of the legs of power, there's three legs, there's three legs of the power, we dropped a leg, fell from the pole, which then caused many of the units to short, to ground out. So there were compressors on these units that actually grounded out. And the reason why there's estimates to actually replace the units is because the age of the units themselves, as you know, there's a freon difference now between what was acceptable then and what the new standard is today. So it's that R-12 versus the one, I think it's either 134, I believe it's the 134 that is in the newer systems today and allowed by law. So because of the old compressor in that system, then to make that to where it is now to today's standard, many more components would have to be changed out and retrofitted to make that unit whole again. So it was actually cheaper or probably in the long run more cost-effective to actually have five units request.
I don't disagree with the thought process. The reason why I'm asking who's paying is because we didn't drop the leg on the power and grow the units.
Correct.
So I'm just curious as to why Unisource Energy Services isn't paying for the bill.
Well, that's also part of this conversation. I was going to get to that. Right now, we've contacted our insurance company, we let them know of the circumstances, the situation behind all of this, and they will be pursuing what they want to pursue at that point, if it comes to them seeking reimbursement for what has occurred. Again, that would be their decision to do that and we've made it clear that there's an area of concern, because it was one of, it's their power pole, their power cable in which they maintain and service and upkeep and will let the insurance company decide as to whether or not they're going to pursue Unisource.
It's my understanding that the line was under service at the time that they dropped the leg. Is that, am I correct in my thought process there?
I've.
That was an employee that was working off that dropped it or?
I've heard that version of the story, but I had a meeting this morning and that wasn't, that didn't appear to be that version that I got today. It just, it appeared that that line, just for some reason, gave way and caused the units to short out.
Okay.
But I'm sure as part of, as this goes on, there'll be some investigation on the app, the insurance company, and we'll provide some of that information.
And then the final item, this would be our normal superintendent report. We do have a special services update. Any other questions? May I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ellen Warren?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes.
Tom Masto?
Yes.
Paul Cohen?
Yes.